Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Chossey?
Here.
Ms. Carl? Mr. Duke Francesco?
Here.
Ms. Tyson Wright?
Here.
Mr. Olaski?
Here.
There he goes. Not here.
Mr. ...
I got your seatbelt.
Okay.
You can stay in the ...
The United States of America and to the Republic from which you stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recommend approval of following meeting minutes.
Second. Any questions? Want to say aye? Aye.
Under Presentations, the first one is PA Representative Debbie Miller.
Good evening, everyone, community members, teams, that's exciting, and school board members. Again, I'm Debbie Miller, I'm the proud president of the Pencrest Education Association and 32-plus-year teacher here in Pencrest. I come to you again this month to update you on the state of the Union, well, moreover, the state of Pencrest. We have just finished the school year with outstanding achievements, as most of you heard about that at the education meeting on Tuesday. You heard about great strides in positive school-wide behavior programs, one school having history-making low incidence of discipline referrals. You also heard of another sending students to Nationals in both robotics and history. I could go on and on with these positive accomplishments. I also heard, though, that in an area of mathematics, we are needing to double down our efforts and get our best professional minds, our math teachers, looking at ways that we can increase student achievement. Not so very long ago, Pencrest led the county in making AYP, or Adequate Yearly Progress. Cambridge Springs High School had a 10-year streak. I'm proud and a little biased about that one. We know we can be at the top again, we just need to listen to the professionals in mathematics of what needs to take place to climb that mountain. My estimation is also that following those years of Pencrest prowess, as I like to call them, the yearly budget struggles began, resulting in cuts, and that has not helped. Over the last 10 years, maybe longer, I cannot recall coming to the budgetary season and not being faced with tremendous shortfalls. And it seems, over and over and over and over, the only answer is cuts. We are making the news for cutting back and eliminating, instead of those AYP years when we led the way, sorry, with people clamoring to come to our district, to our gem, as I told you, of a small rural school or schools where families can thrive. No one is suggesting to just frivolously spend money without regard or expectations. But just saying we will not raise taxes always results in cutbacks that impact success. Even the mental shift that spreads like a pestilence is damaging. It's almost as if we appear to be a sinking ship. We all know, when a business continues to cut staff, hours, offerings, that the community believes that they are going under, and, well, soon they do. My father was always a frugal man, and my parents did not have much, but he always said, "You get what you pay for." And education is the same way. It's time we invest in our future and not cut from it. A politician, Brad Henry, maybe put it best, "No other investment yields as great a return as the investment in education." An educated workforce is the foundation of every community and the future of every economy, and I believe that includes Pencrest. Please consider spending money on our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. We've had another successful spring season. We try to recognize all of those who have made it out of teams and individuals, who've made it out of districts. Even though we had a lot of success, we only had two teams make it out, and we're very proud of them. I'd like to start by asking Coach Mumford and the Segertown High School softball team to come up.
Ouch. Cambridge.
Oh, my gosh. No wonder nobody's moving. Cambridge Springs softball team, sorry, I was looking at the boys' baseball.
All right, I'm gonna have the girls come down front, so you guys can all see them. This year, we carry a very large roster of girls. Right now, we have probably one of the largest rosters of seniors. We had seven seniors, and then we had ...
Ace the camera, so we don't have to look in the back of your head. The girls, the girls can do it. There you go, she's on TV.
We had seven senior players and one senior manager. That's pretty impressive, considering it's hard to get kids to stick with a sport from beginning to end. We had Amara Vella, Morgan Dunton, Kayla Crawford, Quinn Eglin, Haley Rogers, Trinity Caldwell, Cheyenne Moscone, Peyton Leandro, Savannah Loveland, Emily Boylan, Jasmine Butter, Ashley Fredikowski, Morgan Harris, Jordy Clawbone, Jaden Newell, Sidney Zilhaver, Jaden Simmons, Kylie Miller, and Maddy Dragasavec. We also have Abby Miller, Lily Plastity, Aubrey Crawford, Ally Mumford, Gigi Vella, Jada Morowski, and Angela Hassenger as our managers. One of the important things I'd really like to say is, number one, we were the region co-champions. We were also the District 10 champions. This doesn't happen without a really large staff. It is vital that we hold on to our volunteer coaches. We have one paid coach as the head coach, and we have one assistant-paid coach. We have three volunteer coaches that go with us and play integral roles in our programs. They give up all of their seas, all of their time, they don't get paid for anything, and we do summer leagues, we do all types of stuff with these girls. But more importantly, they're positive role models. We have, Dave Miller is the assistant coach, but if, take a second and look at one of my volunteer coaches, who does everything for this program. We need the support for them to be able to attend things, because they really do make a difference. Abby is our first base coach, who is always with these kids and is a positive role model and teaches in our program. So please continue supporting not only our paid coaches, but our volunteer coaches in everything they do for these young women to be positive role models. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, congratulations. Coach Leslie in the Segertown High School, as always, baseball team.
Thanks, Coach.
First thing, I think, is just thank you, right? Thanks to our administrators, Dana Mason, our athletic director, Dr. Howick at the high school, Mr. Young, and school board members, right? I think that, that high school athletics are a vital role in the high school experience. And so, to have a school district that values that and continues to value that, we're extremely fortunate for that. We had another good year this year. You know, after we graduated eight seniors last year, you know, I think a lot of people kinda, you know, were questioning, you know, where we're gonna be. We, uh, we kinda put it together this year, and it's really kind of a testament to the guys we have standing here. You know, we, we were able to start six to seven underclassmen, freshmen and sophomores this year, with having, you know, a handful of our upperclassmen that played as well. So, the guys in front of us tonight, we have Connor Shaw, we have John Grundy, we have Joe Grundy, we have Garrett Crawford, Troy Mosbacher, Gabe Jordan, assistant coaches. We have Dave Bradley and Brad Wise. These guys did a phenomenal job this year, they really did. Unfortunately, we have a Junior Legion game tonight, and half of our team is there. They would have liked to have been there, been here as well, so, again, thank you very much, and let's give a round of applause to these guys.
The one thing, Coach, for supporting our community well. And I did see the boys setting up for that Junior Legion game on the way over, and I thought that that was gonna be a problem, but it always is. And I apologize again to Cambridge Springs Girl Softball, and congratulate you on an outstanding season. If you guys need to go, 'cause I know there are games and jobs and summer activities, please feel free to walk right out, you're not gonna hurt our feelings. So thank you again and congratulations. As we move to citizens' comments on agenda items, there are no registered speakers. However, the floor is open for citizens to comment on agenda items for two minutes. Agenda items, just come on down, if you could state your name and your township for the record, and then we'll give you two minutes.
Good evening, Daniel McComas, Troy Township. I'm here about tonight, about the tax increases. You know, things are tough all over, everybody's gotta have the, you know, everybody needs more money now. I know the school needs more money for law stuff, we got old buildings that need maintenance. But raising our taxes ain't gonna help anybody, it's gonna make everybody else's problems worse. 'Cause if you rent a house, your landlord's taxes go up, your rent goes up. When my taxes go up, I spend less money out in the community too. I know the kids like their stuff supported through the schools. We, when I was in school, we did it through fundraisers of our own, the school didn't support us at all, but we still had our ball teams. We've got a bloated administrative staff, we got a 13-to-1 student-to-teacher ratio, which seems awful high for amount of teachers. There's gotta be other ways of cutting things, to do other things, to bring our costs down at these buildings and in these schools. There's, I hear, you know, the half a mil tax increase has been put on the books for a while, it was put off or whatever. And there's talk of other people wanting to raise it more than that. I think it's kinda ridiculous, 'cause we don't even, we're still not meeting state minimums in any academic field. And I don't see how pumping more money into less work is gonna make anything any better. If we wanna raise taxes, we should probably be passing in at least some of our academic fields before we start giving out more money, you know, or to make, making demands on the taxpayers. We've lost 7% of our population since the 2010 census. We've lost almost 30% of our enrollment in Pencrest School District since then. Meanwhile, homeschooling's going up, private schools are going up, cyber schooling's going up, 'cause we're failing kids with our educational problems here. We're not, we're not teaching them anything, they're not learning in our schools, the people's not putting them in our schools. And I don't think that our schools really deserve any more of our tax money, I really don't. That's all I got.
Thanks. Any additional speakers, agenda items?
Jim Rankin, Richmond Township. I, I think any kind of talk of a tax increase without a judicial look at that budget and see where the fat is, because I was a teacher in Houston for 21 years, I know what it is to have not enough pencils in the classroom and have to go out and buy it myself. And I also know what it is to not get paid enough to do the job that you have to do. At the same time, the news story on Channel 24 this morning was the aging population of both Erie and Crawford, Warren, and Menango Counties. And the fact that that aging population has a fixed income. And when you talk about raising one mil, five mil, or three-quarters of a mil, you gotta look at who you're taking that money from, and then you have to look at how much of that money is actually gonna benefit. Now, if we're talking millions of dollars, and you're going to increase the educational foundation exponentially, then it's worth it. But if you're raising it and you're not getting the, the educational benefit, both for the student and the, the community, because we all pay taxes, even though we don't have any kids in Pencrest, and we're all former, some of us are former students of Pencrest, we, we do wanna support our school, and we want our schools to thrive. But at the same time, you, you guys have gotta be the most judicial at looking at every light item on that budget and saying, "Do we really need this? Do we really need this many?" Whether it's anything from custodians to librarians to teachers teaching off subjects, you have to look at all that. And we're gonna have to trust you guys to do, you know, the right judicial thing. So please be judicious, don't just get a headstrong idea and say, "I wanna raise this much, and if you don't do what I say," then, you know, that, that doesn't help anybody. Please work together, please be judicious, and spend our money wisely. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna continue. First item, under the education report, resolve the Pencrest Board of School Directors' approved attached K-12 Math Curriculum.
Second. We have motion in the second, and the comments, questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item B, recommend approval of the attached Regional Behavior Consultants Contract.
Second.
We have motion in the second, questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item C, recommend approval of the attached resources and materials in accordance with Policy 109.
Second.
We have motion in the second. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Facility and Transportation Report. Item A, resolve the Board of School Directors' approved six-month review of the attached ESSRS Health and Safety Plan. This plan hasn't changed in 18 months, we're required to re-approve it every six months.
Second.
We have motion in the second, questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item B, resolve the Pencrest Board of School Directors' approved the tra, the attached drinking water test results for Cambridge area, Maplewood Elementary, Maplewood High School, Segertown area.
Second.
We have motion in the second, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item C, recommend approval of the attached agreement with Crawford County Children and Youth Services.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, recommend approval of the attached list of transportation drivers?
Second.
We have motion in the second, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Financial Report. Item A, recommend approval of the attached treasures reports?
Second.
We have motion in the second, questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item B, recommend approval of payments of the attached disbursements?
Second.
We have motion in the second, questions? All in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item C, resolve the Pencrest Board of School Directors' approve and adopt the final fiscal year general operating fund budget and the annual tax resolution for the 23, 24 school year as listed. The additional tax revenue generated from the tax increase will be set aside for debt service fund and paid for future debt service payments.
Before I ask for a motion, I want to indicate what can be done.
We have a motion in a second.
Somebody made a motion.
Second, for a motion, second.
All right, Troy. We have a motion in the second.
Sorry, I didn't know you wanted to say something there.
Should discuss it?
Discuss. Discuss.
What were you gonna say?
Questions?
Yeah, what was you gonna add, Luigi? You were starting to say something, I don't know if you ...
Well, the motion's on the floor.
Oh, I got you.
If, 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 if any help, if anybody feel there's a, there's a need to amend this, this motion, you may, you may do so. But you need another motion to amend it, and you need it a second, okay?
I would motion to amend it, do not agree with the tax increase.
Which tax increase? It's only, it's only one tax increase, it's not, concerns the budget.
It, it's in there, it said the additional tax revenue generated from the tax increase will be set aside. There is a tax increase, 0.5 mil.
Yeah, there's a tax increase, it here only specific for, to pay a specific loan.
I understand that, but it's still a tax increase, correct?
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second for that?
What's the motion? You have a motion, you're gonna have a motion to amend, so you wanna, so you're saying you wanna eliminate the tax increase? So you wanna, you wanna motion that we approve the agenda, the motion to pass the budget without a tax increase?
Yes.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Brown, you have orders, you know, if you have anything to say, all right, the whole board.
You guys can't have your own quorum over there, this is a public meeting, you have to talk.
We can't have discussion unless we have a second, no, do we have a second to, to the amendment?
I'll make a second, just for sake of discussion.
Okay. Discussion to the, to the amendment.
Amber, my, my main thing with that is just that if we remove the tax increase, which I am opposed to, then we would need to adjust the budget, unless we dig into the funds that we had set aside for offset.
Well, I understand that, that's what I'm proposing, that we adjust the budget. I mean, from what I have seen, Dr. Glass was adjusted it and been able to reduce it by, what, almost $4 million in the last month? It's been quite a few million dollars. The tax increase, from my understanding, is going to generate $280,000. I think we can cut another $280,000 so that there is no tax increase.
The problem is, though, this is for the loan, and that 200, if we do cut 287,000, I think is what the money is, or whatever, that's a one-time thing. The 287,000 tax increase is compounded every year to go towards our loan payment. That, that's what, that's what I'm getting at.
Right, and I understand that, but I think that money can be found, and I don't think we need to generate a tax increase.
Okay. Can I, can I just ask for clarification on what the motion is?
What's the motion?
What's the motion?
The motion is to eliminate the tax increase, and no tax increase.
So it's to, it's to amend?
She's talking about the half a mil.
Yeah, it's to ...
So, then my question, are we asking to amend the budget, or are we asking to eliminate the?
To amend the motion.
That, that what you said was we need two, one motion to amend the motion, and then another motion to make a change to the motion.
No, we need, we all need one motion, to amend.
Is the underlying motion to adopt the budget?
Yes, yes, that was the motion.
Okay, and then, and then there's a motion to, are you also setting the millage? Yes. All right, so the motion is to amend the original motion? Yes. And to eliminate the millage increase, correct?
Correct.
That's the motion?
That's the amendment.
Right, that's, that's what you're, so you're gonna vote on the amendment first?
Yes.
And, and then depending on the outcome of that, you will vote on the, whatever, whatever results from that?
To amend.
You'll then vote on whether to adopt the budget with a certain millage rate? Correct, thank you.
Correct. Any additional questions?
Discussion.
Or discussion? If not, you can go have a roll call.
This is the vote only on the amendment now?
Only on the amendment, yes.
This is the vote to amend the budget.
We're amending the motion to read, to balance the budget, but where it says annual tax, or tax resolution, there is no increase in the tax resolution. So before we, if this passes, we'll amend that resolution for you.
One, one more clarification. So, if it's amended that the tax increase is pulled, we would have to dig into the fund, correct, that we use to offset?
No.
Offset every year, is that right, Kristen?
Yeah, you gotta come up with 140,000 to put into the debt service.
Unless we were to amend the budget as a whole, that's the only, you would have to amend both, correct?
A roll call on, on the amendment?
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Bryant?
I'm not sure, we're doing, um, yes.
Mr. Chossey?
Yes.
Ms. Carl?
No.
Mr. Johnston?
No.
Ms. Tyson Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Olaski?
Yes.
Mr. Duke Francesco?
No. What we got?
Four yeses, five no's.
So the amendment, the amendment to the motion, to the motion fails. Okay, now we're gonna go to any discussion on the amendment, motion. Okay?
Um, I would just say that, like, the 0.5, just to reiterate, goes directly towards keeping Cambridge open and remodeling Cambridge. That doesn't go to improving education or education services. Um, when we talk about, like, our SRO, police officers and things like that down the road, like, we need to keep our kids safe as well. If there's a motion to go ahead with a higher tax increase, I would support that. But when we look at, at what we're doing now, you know, it's, we're doing, we're doing a good service to our taxpayers right now. We have the highest income in Crawford County, the lowest property taxes, we have the highest tax collection rate. So if we feel like we're providing the best service to our taxpayers, I feel like we, we are. Then if you ask that same question, we're providing the best service as we can to our future taxpayers, which are our students. I'm not sure that anyone here, any of the speakers, they all seem to agree that we're not doing the best job, and we could provide more resources to do that. You know, I, I think we need to think about that as we move forward. We're not adding to education, we're not doing anything other than paying a debt that we said that we would pay at 0.5.
Any other, uh, discuss, any other comments?
Well, I'm opposed to the tax increase, and I'm also opposed to operating in a deficit. I think that we need to go back and review the budget and balance it.
Hey, man.
And I agree with exactly what Mr. Bryant said.
Okay? Any further discussion?
Just to add to that, we have reviewed the budget, we made cuts to it. The idea that there's more out there to cut, just in general, without there being something specific attached to it, I, I don't think that's realistic. The things, the, the questions that are out there, I've heard we should look at utilizing extra space, that would cost money to do that. The questions I've heard from board members are, "Should we provide transportation to students, special education services, and should we follow the law?" It seems to be the questions I hear from board members, and the answer is yes, all of them. There's, to say there's more to cut without giving anything specific, it's just a, a general statement that doesn't mean anything. No. We have cut $4 million from the budget, we're cutting into real services. To say that there's more to cut, or there's something else to cut, if you don't have something specific to say, then, you know, I don't know what in tarnation.
Anybody else? Alright, let's go ahead, have a roll call.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Which?
We're doing the original motion with the budget increase.
The budget with the point five mil increase.
I, I vote yes.
Mr. Brooks?
I'm still no.
No? Mr. Brown?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Bryant?
No.
Mr. Chaucie?
No.
Ms. Crawl?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson Wright?
No.
Mr. Wlaski?
No.
Mr. D. Francesco?
Yes.
Five noes.
Would somebody?
Four yeses.
Would somebody like to make an additional motion?
I'd like to make the motion with a point seven five mil tax increase.
Any discussion? Yeah, we have a second.
Yeah, I'm gonna say something as a parent. My children have gone to Sagertown since kindergarten. I have a scene this fall. And I'm voting on this not only because my kids need it, but all the kids in Pancras need it. Um, as Jeff indicated, the half mil increase is just for payment of a bond. I wasn't even on the board when that happened. We know we're debt, we need to pay it. That's what good stewards do. And yes, paying more money stinks, I get it, I don't like doing it. But at the end of the day, the tree growing in my backyard that has money on it died. So, like, we have to do something. Everything is increasing. I mean, gas, electricity, fuel, everything, anything you look at these days is increasing. And on top of teacher salaries, and pension funding, and benefit costs, and overhead, and operating costs. So, a point seven five mil increase, still not quite enough, but it's, it's, it's needed. And if we continue cutting, there's nothing left to cut. These kids are gonna go to Sagertown, and they're gonna leave the district.
I'd just like to say again, point seven five, that pays our debt and pays for, uh, an additional school resource officer. If you can't support paying our bill and keeping our kids safe, I don't, I don't know what we're doing here. Um, when we talk, I hear, and last time I said this, I, it was laughed at, but we spent nine thousand dollars on legal fees last month, and that's what we used to spend in four months. And that was over a policy that board members said they welcome lawsuits over. So, to ask where we can make cuts while we're spending money, it's, it's hypocritical. You know, our students have a right to quality public education. All citizens have the responsibility to pay taxes, and the board, we have the duty to make tough decisions, not the popular decisions.
Okay, well, I just agree, because when you have a home budget, like, let's say you have a budget at home. Just because milk's gone up, and bread's gone up, and everything's gone up, and you decided to take out a loan on your visa, are you gonna go to your employer and say, guess what, you have to give me a raise now because, you know, I have this loan to pay, and, and everything's gone up? No. Employers aren't paying more just because everything is going up. And so why would we wanna put that burden on our community to have even another thing go up in their life when they're on fixed incomes and their employers are not giving them more money? This is gonna be a hardship for the community, and I do not agree with that.
I second that a hundred percent. Families cannot afford more. Families are eating out less, families are buying less expensive food, families do not have more money to give. Property owners cannot afford continuous tax raises, we have to stop somewhere.
Amen.
Okay.
I'd just like to say, like, ninety-five percent of our tax owners pay their, their debt, it's gonna be more than that. Um, it's not a home budget, this is a service we provide to the community in providing a lower quality education, where our students are less likely to be able to pay their taxes going forward, is not what we all got elected to do.
Can you prove that there's gonna be less of an education?
Can you prove that anything you said either? No, that's not sensible.
Alright, let's, cut. Any other discussion, any other members that have to say? Roll call.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
No.
Mr. Chaucie?
No.
Ms. Crawl?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
No.
Ms. Tyson Wright?
No.
Mr. Wlaski?
No.
Mr. D. Francesco?
No.
Okay, that motion failed.
Failed six-three.
I have, I have a motion of my own to put on the floor. My motion will be to pass the budget as, as recommended by the administration without, without a tax increase.
We already voted on it, didn't we?
Yeah.
This is without any taxes.
That was the first one, that was the first one. I make the motion, we pass it as written with the point five, you know, I'll switch my vote this time, and we can pass with the point five.
I second that. So, just, just to be clear, the original motion? The original motion is the motion that we're gonna discuss, which is, uh, the point five mil increase. Okay, now you can discuss.
Any further discussion? We already say everything that had to be said. Roll call. Roll call.
Yes. Sorry, I knew I was first, I jumped the gun.
Trying to get it all written down.
Good luck.
Okay. Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
No.
Mr. Chaucie?
No.
Ms. Crawl?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson Wright?
No.
Mr. Wlaski?
No.
Mr. D. Francesco?
Yes.
Five yeses, four noes.
Thank you. Item D, resolve the Board of School Directors' approval of the resolution to authorize twenty-three twenty-four homestead and/or farmstead real estate tax reduction of approximately two hundred and sixty-nine dollars for each qualified homestead or farmstead property owner. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item E, uh, recommend approval of twenty-three four monthly health, dental, and vision rates as developed by the high-market underwriting methodology. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Item F, approve the district's two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four insurance close as attached. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Item G, approve the twenty-three twenty-four paper supply quote to CPG Incorporated. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Item H, recommend approval of twenty-three twenty-four IU five special education contracts as listed. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Item I, recommend approval, I apologize. Did I skip one? Thank you, I appreciate that. It's my second mistake already, jeez. Alright, I, I'm gonna go back to D, and I apologize, recommend approval of following support staff substitutes as listed. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Comments, questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item F, recommend approval to create the position of information system specialist. Second.
We have a s- motion in a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Item G, recommend approval of following individuals for summer twenty-three technology internships.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item C, recommend approval of the following coaches. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Item E, recommend approval to eliminate the position of instructional technology specialist. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Item F, recommend approval, I apologize. Did I skip one? Thank you, I appreciate that. It's my second mistake already, jeez. Alright, I, I'm gonna go back to D, and I apologize, recommend approval of following support staff substitutes as listed. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Comments, questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item F, recommend approval to create the position of information system specialist. Second.
We have a s- motion in a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Item G, recommend approval of following individuals for summer twenty-three technology internships. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Item H, recommend approval, uh, of following individuals as computer technical advisors or technology integrators as outlined in the collective bargaining agreement for the twenty-three twenty-four school year. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Item I, recommend approval to create the part-time position of Pancras mail carrier. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments?
We just eliminated this position, and I don't think, with the number of administrative people that we have employed, I can't believe we can't take care of the mail between the buildings, so I, I would be opposed.
Any other comments?
I would say that I'd rather have someone paid to deliver the mail than having our superintendent paid to deliver the mail.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any objections?
Yes.
One objection?
Two.
Two objections.
Just two?
Two. Yeah, two. Item J, recommend approval to appoint Kristen Eckert as treasurer effective through the following school year. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments?
I'd make a comment that I, I think she does an outstanding job putting up with all of us.
That I agree with. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Item K, recommend approval of the following extended school year substitute for the twenty-three E S Y program. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Item L, resolve the Pancras Board of School Directors' approval of the attached Act Ninety-three Support Professionals Compensation Plan. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Under new business, uh, item A, recommend approval to appoint Teresa Crawl as the P S B A voting delegate. So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments?
Good luck.
Any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye. Policy reading, we have a policy for first reading, just for informational purposes. A policy approval, uh, recommend approval of following policies, eight hundred, eight thirty, eight thirty dot one.
So moved.
Discussion?
Discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Item D is also, just for information, in accordance with Act Forty-four of twenty eighteen, on June fifteen twenty-three, the district safety and security officer presented to the Board of School Directors current safety and security practices that identify strategies to improve school safety and security. So that conversation did take place. Uh, at this point, we have, uh, board director discussion or new business? Seen none, a couple announcements, we met an executive session on June twelve and fifteen for personnel negotiations, litigation, and safety and security, as I recently discussed. Uh, we do have citizens' comments, we have two registered speakers, uh, they will have five minutes. Individuals who wish to speak on non-agenda items will have two. Uh, Jessica Ashbaugh.
Hi, I'm Jessica Ashbaugh, I'm a Woodcock Township, um, resident, and I'm here to just talk about investing in our children. Um, one of the things, and I know you guys get read this a lot and see it, is to look at our mission, is to provide resources and opportunities that challenge students, assess their educational progress, provide a system of support, and empower all to become confident lifelong learners. Um, I read through that, and I really hope we're doing a great job. I do have some concerns as a parent. One of my concerns is, um, we're now transitioning to having a high school student, and now I'm becoming aware of things in the high school, such as, uh, the music and chorus teacher resigned, um, and there's no language teacher. So, I thought those would get taken care of. I looked on the jobs available about two hours before the meeting. As of now, there are LPN and health tech jobs, a math teacher, a special education teacher, various coaches, positions that need filled. There was not a music or chorus teacher, there was no language teacher. My question is, are we removing supports for our children? Um, my other concern, I'm very grateful to see that it was taken off the agenda. Originally, I was going to speak to the librarian issue. Our children need librarians at both the elementary and high school level. People who know what they're doing in the librarian. I have, um, thirteen points I can go over if that ever comes up on the issue again of why we need those librarians. I'll save my rough for today. The next thing is, realistically, we need to look at student class size. One of the reasons why we moved back to this area was because we wanted our children raised in a small town with good values and small class size. According to the American Federation of Teachers, class scores for optimal learning, or I'm sorry, class sizes for optimal learning are between fifteen and nineteen students. On Public School Review, reading about pros and cons of class sizes, um, one such program called the STAR Program ran a study of classes that moved from twenty-two to twenty-six students to thirteen to seventeen. This study found a substantial increase of academic performance of children in primary grades, especially those from poverty areas. A survey from School Improvement Network, um, of over five thousand educators across the U.S. in various, um, rural, suburban, and urban areas with an average class size of twenty-three, they put optimal class size for learning at fifteen to twenty. How do we compare? I can only speak to Sagertown Elementary, um, I do not know any statistics for Cambridge or Maplewood. But at Sagertown, in the elementary school, our lowest number we had was eighteen, our highest was twenty-five, and out of those classrooms, the majority of them are between twenty to twenty-five. A long, long, long time ago, when I was an elementary school student, when we had those classroom numbers, we also had a full-time aide, who was an absolutely wonderful woman. Are we truly doing the best? Lastly, and this is something I want to mention when I spoke at the November meeting, what's going on with the specials? I brought it to everyone's attention, I understand there were a few of you that were not here. Did anyone look into it, and how they're being run, why they are being run in that way? It wasn't beneficial, at least from what I could see as a parent point, other than we remembered to send gym shoes in that one week. The other thing, and it's still a little early, we're... The other thing, and it's still a little early, we're into June, what's going on with the Sagertown Elementary School playground? I know we just came out of a drought. Hopefully we get some more rain, that's not great for the playground, it turns into a sopping giant mess. I believe that's supposed to be taken care of per that meeting in November. My concern is, it's not on the agenda. And maybe that's not an agenda item, I assumed it would be. Does that put us into July's meeting? And if it doesn't get approved in July, or if it does, does that take us to August? My bigger concern is, are we gonna finally start working on it in August and then our kids don't have a playground for the first half of the year? We trust you guys to make these decisions. I'm just asking, are we doing the best for our children? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. White here?
Hello, I'm Reagan Whitehair, I've spoke about three times before. First, I'd like to say, you would save a lot of money if you enforced the policies and didn't make some poor choices. So, I'm not, I'm sure I'm not the only one who feels this way. I'm tired of not being listened to, I'm heard, you hear me, but I'm not listened to. A lot of you seem to not really care because, I mean, I'm a teenager. We're all here to protect and help the children and the community, but the policy that was passed in January isn't helping anyone. So, specifically, it was banning of books that are sexually explicit and most of those books are LGBTQ plus books and also some are about abuse that some children go through. So, the books that are LGBTQ passed or banned for being sexually explicit and being banned from the library is honestly almost like a gateway to, hey, it's okay if you bully us, because I support that too. And I'm not, it comes off, yeah, we're gonna discriminate the gay kids, you guys can too. That the bullying we endure is okay, I was bullied to the point where I wanted to die. That I'd rather be dead than go through another day in that school. I went to the psych ward five different times, five. Now I have borderline personality disorder, which most of you probably don't know, is a trauma-based disorder most time found in kids who go through child abuse. I have a wonderful family, they're accepting, they love me, and I'm grateful for that. The only community I was never accepted at was Mickwood High School. I have such severe trauma, I have to go cyber, which causes you all to spend money, which causes us all to spend money. My friend, who went through similar bullying to me, now has PTSD, which is common in veterans who go to war. And the banning of these books is supporting this, supporting the trauma we must go through. With my five times in the psych ward, I dealt with more sexually explicit things than you can even talk about in a school setting. I dealt with grown adults trying to undress in front of teenagers' rooms. People who were there and in need of mental help because they're rapists. I had a rapist admit to me, they did that to a young child and then tried to get with me. There are people who went through the trauma and abuse that are in some of the books you wanted to ban or did ban, all because you want to force your own religious beliefs. Not forcing them in the libraries, like having the Bible there, that is not forcing. It is forcing in the policies, you cannot and should not be able to force your own biblical beliefs upon children in policies we are forced to comply with. You aren't here to spread the gospel but here to serve the public. Indoctrination isn't how you run a public school. I will continue speaking until I'm not just heard, I am listened to. I will continue telling you how much you're screwing over these children, how terrible you are at your job, how humiliating it is for you to even be here and acting like you're doing this for the children and not to feel in control. This is for younger me, the little girl who loved expressing herself with the short hair who would cry every time she was mocked or made fun of for having a boy haircut. The girl who would hide in the closet and beg her mom not to go to school in the second grade. The girl who would fake being sick so she didn't have to step foot into that school. The girl who didn't actually hate herself. The girl who but hated how others perceived her and hated so much that she thought she was better off dead. The girl who now knows she was never the issue. It was the school who ignores the actual issues right in front of their faces who are at fault.
Any citizen would like to speak on non-agenda items has two minutes? Speak your name and township.
Sure, Gary Rankin, Athens Township. I just recently retired, two years ago, and I'm living on half of what I did when I was working. And, and I had a good job at Chanlock. I was a salary employee. So, just remember, when you wanna vote all those taxes, eventually, we're not gonna be able to pay for them. So, use your money wisely, but you can't keep going to the well for more water. Something you might wanna look at? All of the game lands that are around, they don't pay taxes. And our township is fifty percent game lands. So if you want some revenue, get the state to pony up some of that money for all that game lands that we have in our Crawford County. Just a thought.
Any other residents? Board member Mark?
Sure, I know. Well, thank you everybody for coming, and here we are at budget time again. This is the second part of our job. Last month, doing the graduation was the best time, best part of our job, this is the hardest part. Couple things I'm gonna say. Budget is very hard, everybody forget, or not everybody, many people forget one thing. Cost goes up at home, but the cost goes up here too. Our expenses are not, I guess I just don't know how to say this without offending people, but our costs go up just like everybody else's cost goes up. I heard one citizen, and I was very disappointed in her comment about basically putting our teachers down for not doing a good job. Majority of our teachers do an excellent job. I stand behind our teachers a hundred percent. They work above and beyond. And if anybody would've been at the education meeting Tuesday night, we had principals talk about what's going on in the buildings. And the thing that, just, I left there so excited because we had principals that, that just told about the great things going on in our buildings and the things that we should be shouting from the rooftops and the things that should be celebrated. We have some people that only wanna talk about bad things. Well unfortunately, with the district as the size of ours, there's always gonna be certain things that happen that are out of our control, but we try to stay on top of them. We're not perfect, never said we were. I wrote all this stuff down, I haven't read one thing yet. One thing that really upsets me though, is like Mr. Bryant made a comment about a thousand residents on, up for taxes this year in Crawford County. But one thing I'm gonna make clear, there's a fact to this. We have over fifty-seven thousand people, or, I'm sorry, taxes, parcels being taxed in Crawford County. Over fifty-seven thousand. Now, if there is a thousand, that's about one point seven five percent. I'm not taking light of that, but that's in Crawford County, that's not Penn Crest. But I followed tax sales for many years. And the funny thing with it is, a lot of those people, just before the day of, they go down and get their taxes updated so they don't lose their property. A lot of times, it's just because they don't manage their money very well. So, Crawford County, I mean, we're talking all of Crawford County. Now, there are people that struggle and there are programs out there such as the Homestead Act that help save a ton of money, but there's also other programs out there, I know my parents, I grew up poor, we had struggled many times, but there are programs out there to help people. The sad part of it is, that what our tax increase is talking about is the average household, I believe, like twenty dollars a year. I know it's a lot for some, but it's really twenty dollars a year. Twenty-five, something like that. Many of my fellow, or some of my fellow board members, they don't believe in reinvesting in our schools. The problem is, if we don't keep our schools alive and proud and our kids wanting to come back and keep our specials alive and the more excited our kids are to come to school, the more excited they're, tell their friends how great Penn Crest is and how things will improve. We have been improving. Our test scores are coming back up. We went through a struggle, every school district did. We had a long three years with COVID and coming out of COVID and a lot of, just a lot of mental issues that we're dealing with. And quite honestly, that's cost us a lot of money also. The government's not stepping up to help in many ways, so we have to do it. Our administration has done a fine job with that and some people make comments our administration's too big. Compared to what it was six years ago when I got on this board, this administration's about half the size. We've lost about two custodials per building since I've been on the board. We have six staff members on each building, but that also includes the mechanics, the maintenance, and the ladies and gentlemen that are cleaning our schools. We've, we've done a lot, teachers have to buy a lot of their own supplies because we make cuts. Our art supplies, for example, used to be twenty-five hundred dollars a year, now it's a thousand dollars a year. That averages about five dollars per student for an art teacher. Now, I don't pay if you've been to Hobby Lobby and buy supplies, but five dollars really doesn't get you much. So those teachers are buying what they need out of their pockets. The education in this district is very good. Our teachers do a fine job. Our class sizes have gotten out of hand again, we need to relook at that. And we just have to stay focused, but there are many, many, many good things that our teacher, our principals, our administration's doing. And they are trying to make this school what it once was, and I think we are on the right track. Compared to where we were six years ago, I can say we've made great strides. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Cambridge girls and the Sagertown boys. On the boys that came here tonight, I was looking at them and I believe at some point I coached every one of them at baseball at some point. So congratulations to them for overcoming their coaching by me and have such success. Number two, graduation, this will be my last graduation, I got to stand up on stage. It was great to be up there again in Sagertown, to see again so many of these kids that I've seen grow up, see them come up. It was, it is the best part about being on the school board. My son will graduate next year, I'm not gonna take responsibility for him by giving him his diploma, but I will get to sit in the audience and see him graduate and see that I've had some effect on the education he received. The votes were interesting tonight, there's a no vote for not even one more dime to spend on our future, it's, we're not, it's not a cost, it's an investment. And we are duty-bound when we get on here to do our job to provide a quality education for everybody. Money doesn't equal education, but when you make cuts to things and the questions are about, do we have to provide transportation? How can we cut funds to special education? Those things there really don't make any sense to me as areas we could make a cut. So, voting no to this budget, you're voting not to improving the Cambridge Springs Building and the point seven five that would pay for Cambridge Springs and our S R O, that's it. So you voted not to keep our kids safe and not to improve Cambridge, that's what those two votes meant. When I look at the board and I see that we welcome lawsuits, we said we, you know, there was a board member that said, I don't care if a lawsuit comes, I welcome it. Our legal bills are now four times more than what they were a few years ago. So when we say we gotta look for areas to cut spending while we're running our mouths to increase spending, that hypocrisy stands out and everybody notices it. I had to try to get a little bit more than the bare minimum. The point five is just what we said we would spend. That does not go into the classroom, that does not do one thing. Our community deserves, for all of us, to try to do a little bit better and we didn't. People here voted for a zero, against a zero percent tax increase, a half a mil tax increase, a point seven five. You know, we're not just here to fill this seat, we're here, we're here to take a stand and actually do something and not just say we should make a cut somewhere. You know, if you've been on the board for four years and keep saying we need to make a cut from somewhere, you don't offer a suggestion to cut something specific, it's not a real idea. It's like saying someone needs to do something. Oh, someone needs to do something, why won't someone do something? But you don't offer, you don't step up, you don't have the gumption to do what needs done, it's cowardice in my opinion. We should expect more from our students than the bare minimum, and that's what we did today, we provided the bare minimum. When the adults won't do more than the bare minimum, how do we expect our kids and our future to be more than the bare minimum? I don't often make quotes of people, but I'm gonna quote Geddy Lee from the band Rush. If you choose not to decide, you still have made a choice. When you're up here and you decide to vote no on everything just so you can go complain, you've made your choice, you're, you're not up here to serve the students or the community. You're up here to serve yourself. We have too many people thinking that being on the school board's easy, and, and, and it's not. I hope we do better going forward.
Yeah, I'll make my speech kinda short. It was an honor and privilege to be at the Maplewood High School, like Jeff was saying, graduation. Being a new school board member again, it was, it was awesome. Fantastic experience. Again, shout out to all the volunteers for the sporting and all that stuff. And that's it.
I was at Maplewood as well for the graduation here. And it was pretty amazing, the band is one thing that just definitely got me, it sends shivers up your spine. It's pretty amazing hearing the band and just shaking all the kids' hands that are going off to either college or career. Just a pretty neat, a pretty neat opportunity that we have as board members and something I look forward to as well. And I'm, I'm gonna touch real quickly on the budget as well. Being a school board member, we are elected officials to serve the community, the taxpayers, the people that elected us. The majority of taxpayers do not want a tax increase. They cannot afford a tax increase. And I believe that we need to represent those people. So that's, that's where my vote was for, was protecting taxpayer dollars. We can do that while also providing an excellent education.
Mr. Bryant?
I'd like to make a few comments on the budget as well. I think it's an awesome responsibility for anyone to be in a position where they raise taxes on individual taxpayers. I, I've heard a lot of things tonight that weren't true. For example, there's no money for supplies, I went through the budget, thirty-nine pages just added up, supply costs, not including special education and athletics, and there's over six hundred thousand for unspecified supplies. We talked a little bit about what some of those might be for. Hundred and sixty-two thousand for furniture. Hundred and twenty thousand for staff development, I don't know what that is. We pay for thirty-six custodial maintenance personnel, twenty-five administrative. It seems to me there's lots of room to balance the budget without increasing costs. Um, it seems to me there's lots of room to, um, balance the budget without increasing costs. Right now, we have over eight million dollars sitting in the bank. And we paid last year over eight hundred thousand dollars in interest because we haven't done anything with it to work on the facilities. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Uh, I have a lot of questions on the budget, and I thank, uh, Dr. Glasspool and Kristen Eckert for the time that they have spent, and I hope we can continue talking. I talked with the Crawford County Treasurer, and she said there were three thousand two hundred and forty-four properties in Crawford County that are in arrears, and they've already, uh, foreclosed on a hundred properties this year. Per the U.S. Census, the per capita income in Crawford County is twenty-eight thousand. Per capita means everybody in the house. The Pancras, well, I won't even go there. One of the most important responsibilities of board members is to work with the administration and develop a budget. It is a major responsibility to decide to raise taxes on thousands of county residents. I think this responsibility should only be exercised when the budget has been thoroughly reviewed and we can look the taxpayer in the eye and say, "We've looked at every possible expenditure." And it is so important that we believe we need to raise taxes on the elderly and the low-income families within the district. In truth, the board has failed in this very important task. At the first meeting when the budget was presented, instead of organizing a budget review, our budget chairman just pronounced that taxes need to be raised. I said then, and I'll repeat now, I will not vote for a tax increase until and unless we thoroughly scrub the budget. I see a lot of things that are not instructional in nature that I believe we could take a look at as far as reducing the budget. And I also believe there's no end for some with wanting to raise taxes. It's very similar to what we're seeing at the federal level with the federal budget. If we can't, uh, adequately educate kids by spending more than twenty-two thousand per student, I don't think we have a money problem. I'd like to commend Amber Wright for initiating an effort to look at some areas of particularly poor performance involving the administration, teachers, and the union representation to determine what we need to do to attack the issues contributing to poor performance. So we now have a debt of over twenty-two million dollars. I think it's time we roll up our sleeves and tackle the challenges we face and stop deferring, uh, tax increases as a supposed fix. The previous raises didn't seem to fix our challenges.
Hello, there's a couple of things that I wanted to discuss. Uh, first of all, Tuesday was educational meeting, and it was, uh, well-attended, and we're thankful for that. Um, there were a lot of positive things that came out of that meeting. But, as with anything, there's always a couple of naysayers. So we're talking about a program that was implemented and has begun its implementation to the schools that offers high school students thirty-four new college-level courses to be able to get college, uh, credits as high schoolers. And there were two, two board directors here that were naysayers of that. These are also board directors that think that only money can bring in good programs. These programs were free, free to the district, but they were still discouraging it. So to me, that's a bit of hypocrisy. Um, also, on another note, I would like to discuss the, um, at the education meeting, we talked about increasing and working a little bit more, um, uh, focused on the seventh and eighth grade math scores. And what I would like to propose is a coalition to do that, just like there's, um, proposing a coalition to work on some of the building and, and that type of thing. I would like a coalition to work with Ms. Miller, teachers, a board member or two, to help come alongside and see what can be done for those math scores. That would be my proposal on that.
Ms. Crowe?
So we'll start on a happy note, we'll go into the middle of the sandwich, and then on another happy note, that's the plan. So as was mentioned, the graduations last week were pretty amazing. Um, I did get to go to Sagertown, and it was wonderful. Um, my son will graduate next year, and he was ushering this year. So the junior class did quite a bit, you know, in serving the seniors. And I think that that's the way it is at Maplewood and Cambridge as well. Um, so it was well done, the teachers were amazing, they had everything put together, it was very well organized. Um, Dr. Howard had it on, everything was just squared up, it was great. Um, and the students were amazing as well. The speeches, there were, uh, the chorus, I believe they sang two songs. Um, so it was, it was very well done, um, and I was proud to be a part of that school, and I'll be proud when my son graduates next year. Um, so we'll go to the budget, which is the middle of the not-so-fun part that I wanna talk about. Um, and I do appreciate the comments tonight about investing in our students. And one of the things that I will say is, um, I'm currently a mom of two, one that will be graduating next year, but during his high school career, um, he did not have the option of in-person foreign language classes. And simply because there really aren't any out there. And I know because we've talked to Dr. Glasspool about recruiting, and there's just nobody in this area. Um, the need was filled through, um, I think Zoom classes and some other resources. But, um, again, if we were to want an in-person foreign language teacher, like German, French, uh, Spanish, whatever that might be, it costs money. And this board has been all about cut, 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 well, you can't cut if you're gonna add a foreign language teacher. The other piece is, um, Sagertown has really suffered as far as their choral, the music program, um, the arts program. They have a beautiful stage, and it's not used. I mean, it was great, the fifth graders had a, a performance, I can't remember the name of it. And then the sixth graders did a performance as well, the Phantom Tollbooth Junior, and it was awesome. I mean, Mr. Ashwell did an amazing job with those kids. I would love to see more of that, but we, we don't have a full-time art teacher like that to actually put performances on. Now, French Creek Community Theater is using Sagertown, um, the stage at Sagertown Archorium, but we don't have anybody internally that's doing that. So it's sad because there's not money there. And so when people are saying, "Oh, you, you know, don't raise taxes," listen, there's no, there're money in the budget for that position. It's just clearly not there. So if you want that position and the parents want the position, then you gotta add it into the budget, because that's how it works. So, um, and I'm not saying we should or shouldn't add it, I'm just saying it's not there for my kids. And my youngest son going into high school this next year is very interested in theater and wants to be a part of that, and Sagertown High School's not gonna offer that. He's gonna have to go outside into community theater to find it. Um, so the budget, yes, it stinks, I'm, I, I get it, I pay taxes, just like you in the public do. Um, but at the end of the day, the board, before I was on the board, we have bonds that we need to pay, and we need to pay it. So that half mill, that's what it's for. It goes into the funds to pay what we owe, not to add any new spending to our current budget. Um, so the last thing that I wanna say, um, is I attended an advisory council meeting. I wanna give a shout out to Patty Feely, um, and Daryl Shields, who's at Sagertown Elementary, and Kristy Mogul, who was at, uh, Sagertown High School. I apologize, I can't remember the Maplewood or the Cambridge, but they were there too, and they were great. I just can't remember names, I'm sorry. Um, but the advisory council, we meet twice a year. And they talk about all of the career exploration opportunities that the children have, um, for all three of the schools, up from, uh, elementary all the way up to high school, and all the things that are done. And I know we've talked about it before, but these are awesome things that we're doing in this district. I mean, they've got Biz Town down in, in Pittsburgh. They have JA for a Day coming in. Parker Lord came in with their, um, volunteers, and they did JA in a day. I mean, these are awesome things for these kids, they learn a lot. They got to go to the ad lab at the, um, the fairgrounds, at the Crawford County Fairgrounds. Um, you know, they, they do, um, trips into tool and die, and they do, um, in the morning, they go to one tool and die, then in the afternoon, they go to another, say, uh, plastics company or something like that. So that the kids can get an idea of what it is, do I wanna just graduate high school and go directly into the workforce? Do I need a tech education? Do I need a college education? And they're giving them the round approach of this, these are your options. The world is your oyster, figure out what you wanna do. So it was a really great meeting, and I am very appreciative of Patty and her team, um, and all the teachers that worked together to get all of those resources on top of the regular curriculum, you know, for our kids, for my kids, and for your kids. So it was, it was great, and I don't know if any of you might have interested in joining that advisory council. There's moms, there's business people on it, um, I'm on it, I'm a mom. Um, so it, it's a great resource to find out what's available and how to help your child navigate, you know, they don't need to be a YouTuber, just so you know, that, that's not like on the high priority occupation list, but I think there were a lot that wanted to be YouTubers, so we're trying to discourage that. We want them to go into careers that will actually make money. But I do appreciate all the efforts that the, um, the career guidance people are giving our kids, so thank you.
I'd like to, uh, congratulate the, the girls and the, and the boys on their achievement in sports, it's awesome. Uh, I had the privilege this year going to Cambridge for the graduation. I was very impressed, Miss Propper put together a very excellent program for the kids, and I was very impressed at the, uh, academics of some of the kids. And there was a lot of kids that had awards hanging around their necks, and we've done away with the, the valedictorian and salutatorian, which we're looking to put back, because taking that away just makes it a participation trophy, in my opinion. The kids that wanna achieve and do something with themselves, get that extra incentive, it's, uh, to me, and I think it's a plus for them going to college, the ones that wanna go to college. I wasn't college material, uh, I joined the workaday world, and I'm very supportive of our, uh, Career Tech Center. And if you look around the community, you'll see signs in different businesses that I hired a, uh, a career, a tech student, and, and these kids are making some decent money. Now to the bad part, the budget. Before I got on the board, there, there was a lot of money spent on our buildings. I was in sporting events at Sagertown, and they'd have to shut down a volleyball game or basketball game during a rainstorm because water was coming through the roof. We didn't. Before I got on, they didn't, uh, invest in, uh, upkeep of the buildings. And I was one of the ones that was instrumental with this, uh, bond issue to put money into the schools. And so I feel an obligation, half mills, not a lot of money, and my taxes are super high, I, I voted for it. We wanna keep the kids warm, safe, and dry, and that was what this bond issue was for. Um, as far as add more, my neighbors, a lot of them are, um, widowers, they've lost part of their income, they just can't afford it. And I, I'm not gonna vote to take away their homestead from, uh, at some point, we may have to, I don't know, but, uh, I just, right now is not the time. I'm, I'm having to cut stuff out of my budget, and I think we need to keep, uh, looking at ours as well. Even though we passed this budget, I think as we move forward, we need to start looking at things. And I don't wanna take away from the kids either, but, uh, we've gotta do something here.
I tried to be very short. Well, first, I like, I like to say about the, uh, the budget. The administration and especially, um, Mr. Glasspool and, uh, our business manager, they worked a bit really hard to try to find a way to minimize our expenses and with the possibility not to have a, a tax increase. In my opinion, we did not, did not have a tax increase on, on, on the general expenditures, but we had to, we made a commitment to three years ago, I believe it is three years ago, to help, to help it fix all the problems we had with each building in, in the district. And I, I, I voted for the increase back, back then, and in the following years, and today. Why? Because we made a commitment to fix those buildings. So to me, it's not an, 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 an extra tax on my bill, it's something that has to be done. Now, as far as, as to the education for the children, you know, every board always tries to do everything we can to make sure the kids get educated the way they're supposed to and according to the law. Taxes, you know, it'd be nice if we didn't have to pay any taxes, and maybe it's gonna be, might be, might be, it might happen if they ever get together at the assembly and the governor to make sure that the funds come directly from the state, where it's supposed to be. But we'll see. The other problem we have is that our population in this county is going down, especially in our district. If you know, if you knew any, some history about the area, you take Midville. During the Depression, Midville used to have a thirty thousand residents. During the Depression, it was a booming town. And all of a sudden, just a few years ago, they almost lost their title to be a city because the population was lost. So we're losing population. In our district, we, we lost a few. But the population we lost is, is getting replaced by other populations that unfortunately do not send their kids to public schools. And that's caused a problem for us, because although, although the children don't come to public schools, we still have to supply transportation to their own schools. And if somebody would like to know what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the, uh, increase in Amish population that are moving in our area. That's fine, but unfortunately, the, the student population in public schools might go down, and eventually, things have to change. How, how do we get people to move into the area with, or to having a larger children, a number of children in their own family? Can't do it. We just have to go on what with events that will, that come, that come around. Nothing we can do about it. Unfortunately, all the, all the, all the, uh, school money from the, from the state seems to be always going to gear for Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, and maybe Erie. Why? Well, because it's a large population over there, and there's a lot of people that vote. And unfortunately, we know how they vote. Just think about it. The superintendent in Philadelphia makes more than the governor of the state. Pretty close to about, about half of what the President of the United States makes. If it, if it does just the Bible, I don't know, but that's the way it is. So, you know, taxes are here to stay, unless the state will, will change the way that you, uh, give, remove the property taxes altogether, we just have to live with it, and be careful how we, uh, adjust our money. To that, you know, the teachers, the administration, they do everything possible, not only for the taxpayer, but also for the kids. We do appreciate those teachers that spend their own money to, that, when they feel that they need additional supplies for the classroom. But, you know, life's what it is, and we, we have to do the best we can. And I said I was gonna be short, and this is it, so we need a motion to adjourn.
It's a move. Second? Adjournment. All in favor of the adjourn? Aye.